Okay, it is seven o'clock. I hereby call to order the Nisswa City Council meeting for this Tuesday, February 18th. If we can please rise for the pledge. All right, welcome. The first order of business tonight is to approve the amended agenda. So please note that there was additional information provided to the council for items F1 and G1 that are included in the packet as well as item D3. Do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve the amended agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next up is the consent calendar. So all of the matters listed under the consent calendar on the agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted by one motion. Is there any discussion or commentary?
I do have one, item number 14, the personnel policy leave. I would just ask that maybe the, a council would allow the Personnel Committee to pull that one out and review prior to us voting on it. Just to see how that aligns with everything else. And to send it to the Personnel Committee first.
Any other, any comments or thoughts to Joe's recommendation?
Who did the update?
Mayor Carnahan, the city clerk and I did the update to reflect the changes that were made in '24 for new benefits and things. We just didn't want to update it one after the other, so we waited to roll those together. And then there were a couple of updates to adjust for like credit card use for staff. Things like that is the memo is just a short, maybe six items or something like that. So things that were approved last year for new benefits for staff. But certainly can allow opportunity time to review it if needed, or if there are things going forward. Certainly that would be part of the Personnel Committee to review any new changes or anything that would be relevant.
Yeah, and when I was reading it, just due to some of the background information that we've talked about or discussed, you know, with the different unions and stuff, just how that might tie into this and just, just, yeah, I would just like the opportunity to review it for two minutes. I mean, I don't think, is there anything time sensitive with it that we have?
No, we're just trying to stay current with the benefits that were updated last year. So it doesn't really change the benefits. They are what they are. So can hold if the council would like to approve it with the exception of 14 is fine.
Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, I move to make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented with the exception of item 14, Personnel Policy to be tabled until the March regular City Council meeting.
Any additional discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next up is our open forum, and the first item under open forum is public comment. If there is anyone from the public that has any comments or anything that they'd like to address the council, you are welcome to come to the podium if you can state your first name and your address or business.
There is nothing on the agenda for the downtown master plan. However, the people of Nisswa and the business owners want answers. First off, we clearly asked the council and the mayor, city staff, to give us detailed receipts for January, on January 21st, from the city administrator and WSN. Today at 3:02, I received them with vague details. The hours paid do not match hours and meetings or tasks, in my opinion. And again, it's not on the agenda tonight. We've been waiting, to be honest, since 10:30 to receive those receipts when we first asked for them, sitting in this room for the business listening session with the city of Nisswa. Two, there is still no answer as to the disconnect from the committee to the project manager or WSN's concepts. Where was the feedback and input from? And three, where is the agenda for the retreat next Tuesday? We were told on January 21st that the downtown master plan committee would be invited. I have yet to hear anything. I'm on the committee. So what time and section should we arrive at?
So I can take, well, I'm not sure what one, two, or three was, so I'll just try to answer as best as I can and then turn over, turn it over to other council members. So for the breakdown of the fees that Woodseth has charged, we did do a meeting with Woodseth shortly after the January special meeting for the downtown master plan. And in that, it was about an hour. So in that meeting, they did agree to, I don't know if the correct word is reimburse or credit us the overage, that 11,600 overage for doing extra work on that downtown master plan. So that was a good start, yeah. But we didn't get all the detailed breakdown in that meeting. They did go over, like at a more mid-level, the work that had been done up to that point. I don't have all my notes with me, so maybe Jenny can speak more to that. But from that, we wanted to do a follow-up meeting on that specifically, which we haven't had yet because people's schedules have been a bit hectic. But we, I think we have that on the calendar for either next week or the week after. And in the meantime, I think Jenny did get, again, not the exact detail we need, but a more detailed breakdown of that remaining $45,000 that was emailed to her late this afternoon, so I don't think-
Is it after what I received?
I don't, I think it, yes, I think it was, so we have-
Why was that not sent to me?
I didn't have that information. Woodseth provided it.
This afternoon?
So I provided it to the mayor late this afternoon, not knowing if she wanted to send information out or-
Isn't it public knowledge?
Well, Woodseth did an additional review of their billing, so that's what they provided me late this afternoon. So I provided you everything the city had, and then Woodseth provided additional information context to go along with our meeting that we had to review that scope of work that was, that has been done. And we're working on, if it's fair to say, we're working on a revised scope of work to present to the council in March. We've added that to the retreat agenda as well, so we can talk about that. So that is the 25th, that's Tuesday. The agenda will be out by Thursday this week and-
Where's the invite to the committee, though?
Well, so that is, my expectation was that this is the council retreat, so it's a public meeting. So you can come and listen to that, but as far as there being time for the committee to engage, I don't know with the agenda that you have, that there's time for a robust conversation with the committee.
It was clearly stated at the January 21st special meeting for the downtown master plan that we would be invited. It was asked of you to invite us at minutes 28, 42, 43, 46, 51, 52, 53, 54, 67, and 69.
Yeah, correct. She's correct that they were, that that committee was going to be invited to our, to our meeting next week. So that, that has been said multiple times. So is it, is it a part of the agenda?
Well, as I emailed the council, an agenda at least a week or two ago with the items on that, looking for feedback to make sure we're on the same page. The downtown master plan was not on the agenda at that time because we were aiming for the March council meeting to allow us time to work with Woodseth to come up with that revised scope. So we've added to the agenda and the public, we have said the public was invited to the retreat to attend. So the committee was looking for something specific, certainly.
But then I'm, but then I'm missing something too, because in March, correct, we are going to get back to the people because we are going to have this meeting and on the agenda. But even this fall, when all the business owners were in here too, we had told them at that time too that they would be on, that we, that they would be on it, so.
There'd be full transparency.
Right, yeah. So this, this is not new information tonight.
So if there was something missing with that email sent, certainly feedback is helpful, so we're on the same page.
But, yeah, I guess, you know, I'm not the note taker for the city to put that down. So I mean, I can give feedback, just like Emma is now, but-
Yeah, we can roll the tape.
This, this isn't anything new. I mean, shoot, we had 90% of the business owners in here for one day. I mean, there's more business owners sitting in this crowd too that I'm sure can verify this, but this was clearly stated back then, so it just needs to be a part of that meeting. I mean, you know, you were here, Mark. We're here. I mean, Jesse was here.
Does the council have any issue with, with this?
No, well, it's not a big deal. Yeah.
We just got to put it on, so, so if it's not on there, but yeah, I think that's, that's part of it. We gotta, we gotta continue to work through this, so. So if there needs to be a specific invite, I myself, I don't know who the committee members are. I mean, I'm sure there's an email or list, but I'm not sure who's in charge of that, but.
Does that come-
Well, we can go through Callie.
Callie?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will we hear back on the last question in March, then?
Can you repeat the last question again? Sorry.
Where the disconnect is from the committees' opinions and ideas to the project manager and WSN's concepts that they provided. So what information was being fed to the project manager or WSN that generated those concept ideas because they were not coming from the original committee?
Yeah, we can certain, well, we have that meeting with Woodseth, so we can-
Perfect.
Dig into that on that side and dig into it on the city side.
Perfect.
I'm just a little limited, right? Because I wasn't involved until January, so trying to get up to speed on everything.
Understandable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have anyone else for the public comment period? Going once, going twice? Okay, next we'll turn it over to Chief Taylor for the Police Chief Annual, Police Department Annual Presentation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Filling in for Craig tonight, doing this, so. I'm Sergeant Schmansky. We'll be doing our 2024 review for the Nisswa Police Department here. On the top left there, we have Chief Taylor, myself, Luke Call, Jeremy Rooney, Matt Thompson, Scott Williams, and our administrative assistant, Janil Waterman. Those are our new squads that came in the past year. You might have seen the old ones sitting in the parking lot. Those are the ones that those replaced. We do have our new 2024 squad that is built, that is at the dealership. We are waiting for the upfitter to pick that up and get it equipped, so we can get that one into the rotation as well. And then our 2025 squad is ordered and should be built here this spring. Calls for 2024, we had a total of 2,164 calls for service. The way those calls were received, there was 26 in person, whether someone approached an officer or came into the police department here. 365 of them were received via phone call, 602 over the radio from our dispatch center with the county. 1,167 of them were visually observed by the officer and four in the other category. Main types of calls, we had traffic stops, 1,076. Of those, 915 resulted in warnings, 183 citations issued, 52 total arrests. There's 313 times which we assisted other agencies. 211 medicals, 82 alarms, 77 crashes, and 10 criminal citations issued. Some of the main things that resulted from the traffic enforcement, again, the 52 arrests there, some of the main ones were 18 alcohol-related with DWI, one drug-related for DWI, four drug possession or sale charges, and 14 warrants. Some of our activity for the year, we hired Officer Scott Williams in March. He's fit in very well and has been doing a great job for us. And we also hired our administrative assistant, Janil. She is also fit in very well, doing a lot of great things, taking tasks off the officers, allowing us to be out on the street more. And just some of the things we did throughout the year in March. Officer Hall attended a joint training effort with, as part of the drone team for the county. Crowing County Tactical Team, Cass County Tactical Team were also there at Nature Link Resort, participating in that. And in May, we had one of our safety towns that Officer Hall also participated in, along with Sergeant Paulson from the Sheriff's Office. That was held at the elementary school. June, we had our CPR and first aid training refresher. And also in June, we had TASER training. We do have our new TASERS, the TASER 10s, which are quite different from the ones we currently carry. We'll have training in the beginning of March to get everyone certified with those and get them issued to everyone to start carrying. Freedom Days, parade and fireworks, probably one of the busiest years ever. There was a lot, a lot of people in town, so. Went off quite well, I thought. We had very, very few issues and calls during that, so everything went quite smooth. July, we had another safety town with Officer Rooney there at the community center. Also in July, when we got the two new squads I showed earlier, we also started implementing the Host Alert System. Technology that we're using, when we turn our lights on, it will notify anyone using like a Garmin or some type of GPS that there's something coming up ahead of them. We can also reroute traffic if needed on those systems. If there's a major accident or weather conditions where you need to have traffic take a different route. October, we hosted our open house. We had a good turnout for that. We had some games and activities outside for the kids, looking at squad cars, let them sit in those. And then inside, we had hot dogs and beverages. The kids were able to get little IDs made with their pictures on them and some other information. And we had Officer Rooney with some more presentations and information there as well. October, I had myself passed out some candy for the Nisswa Elementary Halloween Parade. A lot of kids coming through there and having fun. Then in November, we had the City of Lights. It was quite cold this year, so it was kind of hard to judge how many people actually came in. It seemed like there was a lot more people coming for a shorter period of time and then leaving due to the cold. Everything went well there. It was another fun event for the year. That is about it. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Sergeant Schmansky. Does anyone from the council have any questions?
Thanks.
All righty. I'd just like to thank all of our officers too and Janil. They have been doing a great job, so. Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate the great work of the department.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a equipment and repair update on the fire department from Chief Sean Bailey.
So our 2004 pumper truck went in for some oil leaks, and when they tore it apart, we noticed that one of the cylinders is dead. And upon taking the heads off, now we have two cylinders that are dead. So we're looking at a possibly repair upwards of $35,000 to fix our truck at this point. So that's the update. I don't have any solid numbers, but we do have them moving forward to try to get our truck back into service. So that's, if you have any questions, I can try to answer them. Unless you want me to scrap it and you guys just grant me $2 million and we'll put a ladder truck down.
Are there any questions for Chief Bailey?
No motions for that? Come on.
Sean, where is the money coming from and paid for?
I'll take the, the money will be paid out of our sinking fund, it's our truck fund. So we have the money to pay for the repair.
And?
Yep.
The original estimate was around 10 until he got into it.
Yeah, when he, when he dropped the oil pan down, the rings were laying in the oil pan.
Just wanted the council to be aware, since this is of course unbudgeted, unplanned as an expenditure, and if there were any, well, concerns or questions. Certainly the repair is, is necessary to do if there were any parameters for spending that you wanted Chief Bailey to know about, or if it's just repaired as needed, move forward. Wanted to make sure that the council was giving direction as, as a group.
I think you need to repair as needed, and we trust your leadership and guidance to do what you need to do.
Good deal. We'll take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion, please, to authorize the repairs for that, for the pumper truck as?
I'll so move.
Thank you.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, next is reports. Jenny, you are up first.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. My report is in your packet, and I am happy to answer any questions if the council has any. I'll pause for just a moment, and then I have just a couple other things. Wanted to recognize Brian Farrell, our manager at Spirits of Nisswa, has just earned his 10-year anniversary with the city, and so wanted to thank Brian for his service, and we'll provide him with a certificate and a PIN. And then also, if the council wasn't aware, Lakeland News did a nice story on Chief Taylor for his retirement, and certainly could send the link, or if you just Google it, you could find it right away. So just wanted to let you know if you weren't aware that they did a piece on that, and happy to answer any questions.
Any update on the state legislature?
Nothing substantive. Any specific question or just?
You got insight from the League of Minnesota Cities, so I was wondering if you have any other pertinent information to share? Are they going to get back in session?
They are working towards that, yes, yes.
To clarify, are, are the Democrats coming back in to be able to get?
Yes, they have, yes. So hopefully it can start things up again and try to work through the few months we have left, because those will go fast.
And sales tax will be an optional this year for them, again, to be able to provide us the ability to put on the ballot in two years?
Well, the moratorium is still in effect through the end of this session. So we will see if they, if the moratorium simply lifts and the rules in place stay the way they are, or if the legislature wants to propose any different legislation. Certainly that would be an opportunity there, and I think something that we might talk about next month is if the council would like to offer any input to our legislators to encourage them to provide some opportunity for that would be a council conversation, but.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I do have a question. Have we had any, anything come back from the RFP we put out for a labor attorney?
I just received the first one today.
Okay.
So sent that over to Tom Pearson, and they are due on Monday. And then I've sent Tom an email just late this afternoon, so we can connect next week to review them, and then they'll go to the Personnel Committee.
Very good.
I have received a lot of interest as well, so just so you know, I've encouraging from different firms that who are interested, so.
Anyone else have questions for Jenny? Okay, we'll turn it over to Tom. Do you have an update?
Good evening, everybody. No specific update. Have just been working on various projects with city staff in the last 30 days.
Very good. And Bill, do you have any update?
Yeah, I guess I've been working on the Nisswa 2025 street projects, which has actually moved to 26 now, and just working on getting the easements and right-of-way and all that kind of stuff figured out for the roadway, trying to fine-tune our construction limits and looking at the drainage and stuff. Also looking at where Live Station 1 could be positioned for the right-of-way stuff that you guys are going to talk about, and same thing with Live Station 12.
Good. Any questions on any of the reports from the council? Okay, we will move on to new business. The first item under new business is Diane Townsend. Diane, do you want to come up to the microphone?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Carnahan, and council members. My name is Diane Townsend, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight regarding an important issue, the Fair Relief Pension. According to Chief Bailey's 2024- According to Chief Bailey's twenty twenty-four report, eighty-three percent of calls received by the department are related to medical emergencies and motor vehicle accidents. The remaining seventeen percent of calls are for fire-related incidences, gas leaks, and miscellaneous. The data underscores the evolving role of our fire department, where medical response has become the focus. As an EMT first responder currently serving on the Nisswa Fire Department, I have dedicated many years to this vital role in our community. My journey began in May of nineteen ninety-eight when a tragic incident occurred. My friend's three-year-old son drowned at Roy Lake. In the wake of that heartbreak, I was contacted by Richard Geiki, who asked if I would help establish a first responder group for the Nisswa Lakeshore area. Having just graduated from my EMT course, I was eager to put my training to good use and make a difference. Over the years, I have responded to numerous calls and have had the privilege of saving multiple lives. However, in twenty twelve, our first responder group began to experience a decline in volunteers, leading to the discussion about merging with the fire department. On January first, twenty thirteen, the two entities officially joined together. At that time, Bruce Edberg and I were granted grandfathered in as the only two individuals with strictly EMS background. Unfortunately, due to personal circumstances, specifically raising my grandsons, one whom has special needs, I was not in a position to pursue fire training. Before the merger, the Fire Relief Association amended its policies to state that EMS personnel would never be eligible for any type of pension. This decision has left me and others in similar positions without the retirement benefits we deserve after years of dedicated service. However, I want to highlight that in twenty nineteen, laws changed stipulating that fire relief associations must revise their bylaws to include EMS personnel for pension eligibility. I have provided documentation from Open Solutions Alliance, OSA, that supports this. Despite my multiple attempts to discuss this matter with members of the Relief Association and past my mayors, have consistently been told that they cannot or will not change their decisions or apply retroactive benefits. This is concerning, especially given the legal changes that have taken place. Today, I'm presenting evidence that highlights the need for reform, and I'm asking for your assistance in advocating for this change to the fire relief pension bylaws. It is vital that we recognize the contributions of all the emergency responders, including those of us in EMS, and ensure that we are treated fairly. I want to extend my gratitude to Mayor Carnahan for your commitment to helping me navigate this process. Your support means a great deal to me and to others who have served our community in this capacity. Thank you for your time and consideration. Tonight, we can work towards ensuring that all first responders receive the recognition and benefits they rightly deserve.
Thank you, Diane. Does anyone on the council have any questions, comments, or thoughts for Diane?
Sure, I guess I'll start. First of all, I wanna thank you for all years of service. You know, I've worked with you for over twenty years on it and been on hundreds of calls with you. And I appreciate all the stuff that you've done for people in the community and the lives you, that you've saved. And I just first wanna start by publicly telling you thank you for your service. With that, as far as it goes from the council and the relief pension, the city council actually is in no position to make a ruling on this or anything, because the relief is separate and outside of the council. So this, this city council doesn't have any jurisdiction over the relief. And so the correct steps to take, to change, you know, to change or adopt the bylaws within the relief is to first go to the general membership of the relief and formally ask for a vote at that level. And then after that gets voted on it, then it would go to the actual relief board, and those would be the correct steps to take. The council's position is just to support the decisions, basically, and, and if there would be a funding issue at the relief, that's the only time that the city would be involved with it. But otherwise, there's no jurisdiction that the city council has over the actual relief for the fire department. It's a separate thing outside of the council.
Unless the bylaws are changed, then the council has to approve it.
Yep. Well, yeah, yeah, you guys just support it. So if there's a change, then yep, you adopt the changes that the relief makes. But that's, that's the correct steps.
Well, actually, if there are changes to the bylaw, then the council has to approve it. Say yes or no.
Correct. That would be the final step. So first it goes to the membership, the relief, and then it would come back just to adopt because the fire department's underneath the city. But those would be the, the correct steps to take.
Could, could there be any way for city staff to sit down with? I don't know who's running the relief fund. It is Andy?
Andy is the president. He's, he's here also.
Is there any way for like some of the city staff and Andy or some others with the fire relief to sit down and discuss and review the the changes of two thousand nineteen and then have a recommendation, or do you want to do that in with the?
Yeah, that, that is, that is part of the relief, and once again, outside of city staff. Cities, it, it's, city staff has nothing to do with this. City council has nothing to do with this. This is a relief decision. Whether relief, I mean, Andy Seer is the president, but he can speak to that too, but it's.
Yeah, I'd like to hear Andy, why, you know, are they, would they be willing to do this, Ed? The EMT is on, not? Is there a planned discussion? If so, when?
So first, a formal request would have to be made.
I'd say this is a formal request right here, but through the city, I know she didn't go to anybody else, but could she formally request that to Andy right at this moment?
No, because it has to go to the, the members. That's where it starts. So no, this is not a formal request either. It has to go to the membership. So this is not the correct process either. So it has to first go to the membership, formal request there, and then from there, go through the steps. And this is all really defined by the state of Minnesota, actually. And when the fire department took over Zone Two, which Diane was on, so Crow Wing Counties broke up into different zones for the first responders. There are still independent first responder groups working, independent of fire departments in the counter. Zone Two was shrinking in membership. The fire department absorbed all the Zone Two into the fire department. At that time, it was legal documents and everything spelled out at that time specifying all this information at that time that was adopted and signed off by everything. In two thousand nineteen, the rules did change. It actually doesn't say that we have to adopt any of that.
Right, it's, it's up to the, up to the funds whether they want to or not.
But also too, as the city goes and stuff too, there are no, as we continue to move ahead, you know, at that time, one of the stipulations of the fire department that everybody moving forward from the date, forgive me, the date, what nineteen was, that when you join the fire department, you do not have an option anymore of being EMS certified or not. Prior to that, you could be on the fire department and get all the fire department training without the EMS training. Once this all got adopted, it was the city policy through the fire department that everybody was EMS trained moving forward. So we don't have either or. You all have, everybody on the fire department has to be fully trained moving forward due to the type of calls that we go to.
So a question I have, so does Diane have to, I mean, you say a formal request, so that would mean that the person Diane would have to make a formal request.
Correct.
So who does she outreach to, to make her formal request?
Either to Sean, Sean and Andy. So the fire chief, that's where she'd start formal request for the membership.
Diane, have you made a formal request to Chief Bailey?
No, I have not.
Okay, so tomorrow morning, make a formal request. Or tonight, I'd, you know, after the meeting, I don't think she has to call or sit down, but let, let's just see if we can get the ball rolling.
Yeah. So, so like I say, this is all pretty defined by the state of Minnesota. These are just the rules set forward by the state that we're following.
And you guys, you guys, and I know the relief fund.
Department in the states following these guidelines.
Right, and, and I've got a niece and an nephew that are, what's a paramedic, one's an EMT, with volunteer fire departments, and they were added on right away, and that's many years ago, but those are different departments. But, but the final say is with the relief fund, they say yes, no, so.
Yeah. So when we took on the EMS people in two thousand twelve, everybody at that time that was doing only the EMS like Diane was given the opportunity to do all the formal training, like the fire department, to get formally trained at that time, which would have automatically made them eligible at that time for the pension with that training. It wasn't eligible without it. So, but the, the, those, to move ahead, that would be the thing, get a hold of Chief Bailey and make that formal request to the membership, and then it'll be formally voted on from there. And then, then the next steps taken, and then it comes all the way back to the council at the end. My question for the rest of the council, I guess, city staff is, was this known about, was this process known about ahead of time? Before it came to this point where she had to come and present in front of us? If this was known, why was this not relayed to her so we could spare herself of having to come do this, knowing that there's additional process to follow?
Yeah, I just, I just, when I got the email from Dan, that's when I looked into it and saw it, two nineteen. That was the first that I heard of it. It was on, I started looking into it on Saturday, but.
I'm only saying this in, in full fairness and respect to those.
Right.
Specifically you, Diane, for, for, and I echo Councilman Hall, thank you for your service.
Yes.
But we need to be transparent, provide this information to the rest. If we know of this prior to this meeting and having her come up to the stand, she deserved that. And.
Yes, it, Councilmember, it's also though, if somebody wants to address the council, they have the opportunity to do that. Right? So that was wanting to facilitate the request and make sure we're all on the same page with the city attorney as far as process and, and then going forward if that next step needs to take, be taken with the fire relief, which is the official step, but that was her request to be on the agenda.
Right. Diane requested to make this, to be here tonight.
And I think just to make sure we're checking all the boxes, we should confirm with our city attorney what we've heard, that this is, you know, what the right process is, and to make sure we're, we're doing everything the right way.
I agree with what I've heard said, yes.
Okay. Diane, do you have other input or feedback you'd like to share right at this particular time?
Not at this time.
Anyone else have any?
I do. Diane, thank you so much for your commitment and your sacrifice, and I appreciate it. We all do, and that, I think I agree with Joe. There's certain steps that, you know, need to be followed. And, you know, he's explained it pretty well and has a very good understanding for it, and, you know, get together with the chief and so forth and that, and you know, go forward with your request that way and follow the, the proper procedure and steps. And thank you so much for everything.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Diane.
Okay, next is a memo from Public Works regarding the sewer connection agreement with Foxy Properties. So we will hear from Tom first, and then the owners of Foxy Properties second.
Good evening, everybody. You should have a few documents in your packet regarding this. So what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna go through the agreement that I have drafted for you to consider. So as many of you probably know, Foxy Properties is looking to establish a laundromat with the moxie building over here. So we've calculated as a city, our, we have a sewer connection fee estimator that is based on formulas established by the Met Council. So we take that formula, it gives us a, a number, which in this case is seventeen point nine ERC, so that's an equivalent residential connection. Each ERC costs sixteen thousand dollars in this area. That would result in an estimated connection charge of two eighty-six four hundred. After consulting with Mr. Hall and Jake Howser from Foxy Properties, it's felt that this estimate is high. And so using some information provided by them, we're suggesting that the ERCs would likely be more in the order of seven. This would have a total connection fee of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. They would like to pay half of that upfront at the time of the permit. That would be fifty-six thousand dollars. And then the remaining connection fee would be based off of meter readings after one year of operation. And that fee would be paid for over a period of ten years with a five percent interest rate on that. And that would be compounded annually. Foxy Properties will be responsible for any and all professional fees required to prepare and process this agreement. Any increase in flows over this estimate of ten percent or more would trigger an additional ERC calculation, should it be needed. So in this rate, the way this is written, we are, we are accepting the information provided by Foxy Properties as what it will likely be. We're working with them to establish an amount they can afford to start their business. And should they use more water, be more successful than what, what they've believed they will be, the city would still be protected and be able to collect those collection, connection fees if they're realized. It's kind of a complex topic, so I guess if anyone has any questions they'd like to ask, I'd answer them now or do my best to try to answer them.
Well, Tom, I think you nailed it on the head in your council memo, and I'll quote. Please remember, any charges you make to the connection fee, any changes you make to the connection fee system will be seen as precedent by others and will affect the financial health of the sewer fund and fund's ability to afford future capital improvement projects. So with that, I fully agree. There's gonna be no other precedent or grounds that the city's gonna have for future negotiations on this. If this is gonna be the case, which I think this is a very high number, the original principal number of two eighty-six. Are you comfortable with water usage like this in the event that we have future businesses come through and there is this type of usage?
Yeah, I think what, what I'm, what I'm suggesting with this is, is that we would, you know, rather than half of what we believe ERCs could be, so what, kind of to back up a little bit. This calculation is based on the maximum flow you could expect to receive from a business of this type. And so what they're essentially doing is they're buying a portion of the treatment plant that can handle that maximum flow. So we have to be careful not to undersell that. We need to reserve that much capacity, so should their business grow up to what the initial estimate is saying that it's there. Any one business won't push it over, but, you know, if we had many of these type of agreements, we could potentially find ourselves pushing up against our capacity at some point. So anyway, what I'm saying is, you know, instead of half of what our initial calculation is, you might consider a lower number. In this case, I'd say it's closer to twenty-five or thirty percent of the initial calculation. Maybe that's something the council could consider if they wanna do that as a startup for these agreements. Otherwise, you can just accept it as I've written it and go on from there, but we would probably try to write all future agreements the same as this.
And it'll need to be. Well, and we probably don't have the time to discuss this in detail, but I've spent several hours with Tom, and he's brought me up the speed all the way from nineteen ninety-one, when it started, to present day with the sewer and how.
to present day with the sewer and how previous councils, um, set it up from the beginning and kind of what their vision was for Nisswa as far as like bigger lots and things like that to get these higher numbers. And, and that is information that we as a council need Tom to present at a different time. So everyone can get up to speed with it because this issue is gonna keep coming up over and over. And, uh, we need to make some decisions on how to adjust this. I mean, um, um, really any business starting up paying almost three hundred thousand dollars just to hook up to a sewer is a no-go for any business in this town.
It's nuts.
It, I mean, it's, it's just kinda crazy. And so that, um, we need to do sooner and later and take a hard look at because, um, this town's never gonna change, you know? And then also too, when we have a sixteen thousand dollar hookup fee right now, why would anyone want to hook the city sewer when you can go get a private one put in for eight to ten grand? I mean, it's, we're, um, plus then pay monthly fees. So us as a city, we need to get all that information that Tom has shared. So you guys are all up to speed on it. But we have, we have to come up with a different system for not only commercial people, but just the residential house. Um, our costs and, you know, we're talking about more lift stations and repairs and it's only going up. But we have to find a different funding mechanism that Tom shared. A lot of neighboring towns have a lot of different mechanisms of funding the sewer. A lot of creative ways where we basically only have the sewer funding itself, but our numbers are out of line with surrounding communities. So I think that would be something in the real near future that we wanna get set up with Tom to bring you all up to speed on. If that kinda summarizes it.
Sure. There's a lot of details.
Yeah, there's a lot of details that go into this. So.
At this time, I guess I was just looking at this as the contract we need to consider for these folks, uh, if they still wish to move forward with this. This is really, I would say, the best the city could hope to do at this time. Um, with, with the circumstances that we have. So I don't know if, if they would like to comment on what, uh, I've proposed or if the city council has any further questions.
Jake or Katie, do you wanna make any additional comments or address the council?
Hi, everyone. Jake Hoosier. Um, so the initial estimate that was, that we had provided was a max, max, max that is not realistic. So when I got that number, the three, two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollar number and then regained consciousness, I decided that I should probably look into this just a little bit further, you know, and really try to get what we think a true water flow will be. So I have some other friends that own a similar type business in a surrounding community. And they were kind enough to share, um, their usage for the year. So when I, uh, got that information and I re, you know, recalculated it based upon Tom's, um, cost estimator, which was really nice to just kinda plug and play everything. And so that's where that revised number came from was that, which we feel like is a real true water usage estimate for the year based upon a neighboring community that, um, you know, is a similar setup as Nisswa. So I just wanted to make sure the council knew that that's, that's where that number came from. It wasn't just, uh, you know, a shot in the dark. So.
Any questions for Jake? Do we have a motion?
Mayor Carnhand, can I just clarify? So we wanted to confirm with the council the components of this.
Okay.
Uh, we have a legal agreement that the city attorney has drafted for us in the past. So we will use these parameters to draft that agreement and we can work to, um, get signatures completed following a council motion, but just wanted you to know.
Is the only reason why this is coming to council motion simply due to the fact that this has gone beyond the negotiation of strictly the financing aspect of it?
No, we would bring this agreement, uh, a connection fee agreement. We did this with ETOC properties in the past as well. We would bring that to the council so that you under.
Is it discretionary based on the dollar amount or the, the, the volume?
I, I think it's, there's significant dollars involved. And when you're talking, um, typically over a five or a ten-year period, uh, with an agreement, we just wanna make sure both parties are on the same page for something, you know, as significant as this.
And it's outside of the standard calculation used by staff?
No other questions. I'm good.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I will not be voting on this. Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the proposed sewer connection agreement with Foxy Properties as presented with the notion that we are setting precedent for future state with this, for future businesses.
I'll second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. All right. Next up is a recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding chap- the chapter twenty ordinance amendment. So Stephen, we'll turn it to you.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Uh, so my planning commission or our planning commission, um, held a public hearing at February fourth, Planning Commission regular meeting. Um, to address and, um, relieve two conditional approvals that we received from the Minnesota DNR um, and some other general housekeeping elements. The, um, section numbers that contain changes in chapter twenty are listed, um, my memo there. Um, the conditional approvals that are being remedied are to address the FEMA floodplain standards and adopt ordinance language pertaining to those as well as to clarify the PDD district, um, and add that to our language charts and tables um, listed in chapter twenty. It's kind of like a high level summary. I know we discussed some of the changes last month as well and also at our planning commission. Um, entertain any questions that you have in the bucket there?
Any questions for Stephen? Do we have a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of Planning Commission in regards to chapter twenty ordinance amended amendment as presented.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, can I please have a motion to publish the ordinance summary in the newspaper, please?
I shall move.
Any additional discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, motion carries.
Real quick before Stephen leaves though, um, as a council though, uh, Stephen and I have had a lot of conversations, you know, as well as Chris Pence. You know, this process was actually started by Bethany and there's still a tremendous amount of work to do. A lot. And so I would like to see us keep engaging Chris on, on moving forward. And Stephen's got a kind of a list of different ordinances that we've talked about. He can rattle off, I don't have him memorize the different areas, but we've got another, I'll say top twenty that start going through.
There are a few areas of opportunity.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of areas to go. And so doing this stuff, um, is super helpful for him doing his job. And so I don't know if now would be the appropriate time or whatever, but if we gotta do a motion or something. But I'd like to direct him to keep working on that, present us next month with a list of stuff that he wants to go through. And then see if we can get, um, Chris Pence's help with it again to help align like has been done. So we don't, I don't want to slow down the momentum. I want it to keep going.
Yeah.
If everyone's in favor.
Next month is my, uh, department presentation, so I could add a slide in there of maybe sections that could be used in polishing perhaps.
Yep. So if everyone's in favor of keeping this process going.
Good roadmap of how, what's being tackled timeframe like we discussed in that.
Yeah.
In that side meeting of what's gonna be tackled in this quarter going into second, at the end of the year. Yep. Give us a lot to look forward to.
Definitely.
As Don Jacobson used to call it, snoozing material. He's not wrong.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next up is to approve the twenty twenty-five fee schedule for Woodset. Jenny, did you have some comments on that?
Yes, thank you. So just to, uh, remind the council, we may have had some new members since the contract was last approved. Uh, so per the current twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six engineering contract between the city and Woodset, rate adjustments require council approval, uh, based on what is being presented. Um, the effective date, if approved tonight, would be April eighteenth for the new rates. And Bill's memo reflects, uh, rate increases increased between approximately two and a half to four percent, depending on the various categories, uh, for services. And wanted to present this to the council and, uh, I'm sure Bill could answer all the questions if you have any.
Any questions for Bill?
I didn't see the good customer discount on any.
That's a two and a half to four percent rate.
Did you say twenty to forty?
No, two and a half.
Uh, okay.
We get the punch cards every time we use them.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Woodset twenty twenty-five fee schedule as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next is the recommendation to move Stephen from probationary to permanent status. Um, hopefully the council had time to read through everything. Are there any questions or discussion?
Miss Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation, make motion here that we move, uh, Steve from his probationary status to permanent status.
I'll second.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Stephen, you know that that was, uh, Councilman London's first motion he's made here. For you.
Right now.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Okay, and last under new business is the Verizon right-of-way agreement. And Jenny, I think you had some points you wanted to note on that.
Thank you. Um, so as noted in your packet, Verizon has requested the city council approve the attached right-of-way agreement. Uh, this would allow Verizon personnel to proceed with survey work and other related processes at the fire hall site to create construction drawings, um, and things needed as such, uh, to allow them to then, uh, present applications to planning and zoning to initiate that permit process. The city attorney did review the agreement and he had one suggested change which has been incorporated into this document.
All right, any questions or discussion from the council?
Did we officially decide on the exact height? Is that locked in stone at this point or is that still to be determined?
It's a hundred and ninety foot, I think, approximately a hundred and ninety feet, but.
It's proposed.
Yeah.
It's proposed.
They are looking at something taller, but that will be facilitated through the planning commission process. So no, they have not submitted anything formal yet.
Okay, so this is just the site. It doesn't have anything to do with the height yet.
Correct. Just to allow them to go on site.
Yeah.
I mean, just since we're on the topic, I've, I, I've brought this up before to the council. I mean, I'm in favor of better service. There's obviously unlimited benefits for it. However, with this land acquisition that we recently have, I, I just wanna bring it up because I brought it up before. If there's an ability for us to reduce having a skyscraper in downtown Nisswa, that's gonna be a cell tower. I would prefer to do that, to be able to then have that on this land that we're acquiring alongside highway three seventy-one and having a smaller, call it a satellite tower, smaller in footprint, but still going to provide the service that. And that, at least I should say, the reach that we're hoping for. So just wanna reiterate that. It's not gonna be applicable to this, but we can work with Verizon to be able to accommodate that in the future design of this property as it develops over time. Um, there's a lot of benefit to it.
Did they actually give us an exact reason why they didn't wanna go down there? Or was it just the, the coverage distance? Cause we talked about that night, last time he zoomed in, but I don't, last time, they were gonna look into that and get back to us. But I had not heard the reason or the ruling on that. Has anybody?
Oh, me either.
I believe if memory, my memory recalls, um, they basically just said that wasn't a desirable location. I don't know if it's based in proximity to the existing tower and whatever, of course, their maps are showing for service coverage and whatever their priorities are, it wasn't a desirable location for them. That's not to say we couldn't pursue with other cell carriers, that conversation, if the council wanted to separately. Um, I mentioned this to Jesse, I mean, these two are related, but they're not necessarily tied to each other. So if you wanted to continue this project to see where that goes downtown to improve service here, that's great. If you also wanted to pursue another tower in the new property location area, you could do that as well.
You know, desirable locations, funny, my wife just told me, uh, where I wanted to move my beer fridge over the weekend was a undesirable location. I told her, deal with it. Um, I'm the one opening it. Um, but on that note, in conjunction with City of Lakeshore and a two-hundred-foot tower on this new property of ours, we're still getting service coverage in downtown Nisswa. If we're able to have a smaller tower, maybe something that can blend in, like they have these towers such as, uh, um, it's like a pine tree design, right? Doesn't look like one, but it passes the bill. Um, but to be able to have a larger tower in, in Lakeshore, I know for a fact, being a former resident of Lakeshore for just a couple of short years, that that was shot down over there. They did not want that in their area. It might be some desire to be able to work with them to be able to have additional options from that land and that site.
Down the road on the new property, you know, I think it would probably be incorporated into a water tower. You know, in the future, you know, that would probably make the most sense for down there.
We don't talk about, we don't talk about water here.
I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, down the road. Not in the next couple of years, but.
Okay, do we have a motion on this specific agreement with Verizon?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Verizon right-of-way agreement as presented.
Any additional discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, going back to old business from the December, um, council meeting, a recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding the topographic divide for Jethro Carpenter. And Stephen, we'll start with you, then we'll turn it over to Jethro if there is any public comments and then we'll come to council discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So yes, this was in front of you guys back in December to forward off a, um, recommendation from the Planning Commission uh, regarding the topographic divide redetermination. Uh, the applicant Jethro Carpenter here, um, had proposed an alternative, um, topographic divide as opposed to the one made back in twenty nineteen, um, and subsequently approved by the DNR. Um, the meets and bounds subdivision proposal presented by the applicant could not proceed under the previously made topographic divide determination without redetermining it uh, because of the natural environment, lake standards for lot width and lot size minimums. Um, so we requested as a city that the applicant, um, come up with a meets and bounds definition of the proposed alternative to the topographic divide. And the applicant had provided us with two of them, one pre-grading and one post-grading. Um, to, I think, provide perspective that the, um, the area of the grading was not exactly relative to the lot that was in question to be subdivided at this time. Um, so if we were to move forward with the redetermination, that would then get forwarded off to the DNR. We would draft up the, um, motion by resolution, get that over to them to subsequently approve. After which, yeah, can, can come forward for whether it be replating or meets and bounds, um, analysis of subdividing that lot that he is looking at. So, um, I guess I can turn it over to Jethro for his two cents.
Uh, good evening, Council. Jethro Carpenter, I appreciate you guys' time and, uh, having me here. And it's just been a pretty informative meeting, which is good. Um. So we met on site and I guess just to prove to be forthright, so I came here myself. Typically, we'd have our engineer and surveyor if you guys have any questions. So basically, I guess if you guys have a bunch of questions that I'm not able to answer, I would appreciate it being tabled until March. That's because they're not able to attend. More than happy to answer any questions that you guys have. We met out on site. We had a previous top graphical divide that was determined by Brittany that it just the definition top graph divide. I'm not sure that she was able to completely understand what she was looking for. We met on site. I kind of showed the lay of the land and you guys' ability to see it to help put in perspective. I'm happy to answer any questions or anything that anybody has.
Does the council have any questions for Jethro?
I don't think so. I mean, were we all on site that day?
I think so.
I couldn't make it that day.
Oh, yeah.
But I've been out there many times.
Yeah. I guess I don't have any questions. I think at this point, though, after being on site with everybody walking around, there is obviously, you know, I would say a wide range of interpretation on where this divide is, you know? And after walking the site and stuff too, everything does not appear to line up with what the city had previously said. And so I guess at this point, rather than us making a decision, I guess what I'd like to see is, you know, yous are you know, engineering firm WSN as the city to go out there or to overlook what both parties have presented and seeing where the discrepancies are and coming up with the ruling for us, you know, which ones right, which ones accurate or neither one of them are accurate. But do that for us because there is such a vast difference between the two. Something has to be off, you know, and for you guys to do the ruling, but you know, Jethro, that would be at your cost, not the cost of the city. So I would, that's what I'd like to see happen is, you know, we have WSN, let's, let's have them overlook the project for us and come back to us when that's done and kind of give us the ruling and maybe Tom has some feedback or comment on on this.
Just what you just suggested there, if, if, if you want to engage Woodset to do the work at the applicant's expense, then it seems like Woodsets should give A, whether they can do the work and B, what it would cost so that Jethro has got eyes wide open as to what that cost would be before you engage it.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Woodset can provide a proposal to go out and basically we would have to topo that property and provide that information and verify what's out there. The, the issue is is we're, we're not topo-ing the pre-existing condition, we're topo-ing what's there now. So that's where the discussion is going to be as to are we comparing apples and apples or is this going to be a little bit different?
I think we had a good opportunity to understand what the difference was of pre-existing condition versus what was presumed to be an altered landscape or construction activities actually taking place when we, as we walked the site, we saw that was evidence that there was not.
Yeah, there's, you know, when we walked it, you could see that nothing was really disturbed. It's all native ground where, where this line goes. When we were out there, so there's not, other than the road going through, you know, the driveway there, it is all natural pre-grated conditions still. So I don't think that would be a factor in this.
Well, I guess what we can do then is Woodset can prepare a proposal. And I don't know if you want me to go through Jenny or send it to Stephen. Stephen or.
Yeah. Proposal to do the work.
Yeah.
That would, that would be shared with Jethro.
Yeah.
It's shared with Jethro. Acceptable or not.
Right.
So I think if I could, one of the challenges with this is that I don't believe there is a prescribed process, meaning there's not one way to do this. So you're getting variances because there's just a, an applied professional judgment that is offered here from different individuals. And so I mean, the council can contract with Woodset and what you determine is what we all move forward with is an option, but I think that's the reason for the, well, this one said one, this approach was used one way and then we have a different approach now that's being requested to be considered. So I just don't think there's one one exact way to, only one way to do it, which is part of the complexity with this, so.
It does seem like this proposal, once, once Bill and Woodset put it together, that if it, if it sources with Stephen, it should come before the council again. And for Jethro to be here at that meeting, so you're, you're engaging the work, but he's agreeing to pay for it.
Right. But then also too, you know, with that, because of the, you know, the complexity with it, you know, for WSN to present to us, you know, this is how you're going to do it, why you would do it, you know, for the most accurate results. And this is the way that it was done the first time. This is the way it was done the second time and kind of where, you know, show us where the discrepancy lies or how we'd get two very contrasting reports.
Yeah, I mean, there was an engineer that provided some of the information on there and there was the surveyor. So there's different, there's information that we're going to either, while we're not going to be the same probably because that's just generally the way it works out, but yeah, it's stuff that we're going to have to compare.
Right. But I think that's the only way to kind of finally put this issue to bed is, you know, just, you know.
Jethro, we haven't heard from you about, is this the route that you'd like to go?
I, I guess in my opinion, a couple of things, right? So I, I think there's a misconception that one was prepared. There was only one professional that prepared a a top graph divide and that was our engineer. The other one was provided by Bethany, which is a city planner, which is not an engineer. I have no issues paying Woodset to go out there and shoot the property. I have no issues for them to look at it. I'm, my own personal opinion, I like numbers don't lie, right? So you have the surveyor, you're out there, he's going to get the same exact information as what we currently have. But again, like if it, if, if that's what the councils would like to see, I'm happy to provide, I mean, everything within a reason and I'm sure that Woodset is a fair fair deal that they would charge normal rates and it would be fine, but I, I think it might be. I just, there's only one professional engineered company that did it. Now, the surveying was done by our surveyor because our surveyor is local and they provided the information to Westwood, which is pretty standard procedure, right? I mean, it isn't that I, I would think it would be pretty standard procedure that you could take the surveying from land design services without having to go redo a topo. But it, but again, like I, I'm not an engineer and not a surveyor, so I don't know and kind of just trying to figure it out, same as everybody else, right? So.
I think one of the issues might be for that property is that the survey, at least the parts that I saw, was not all inclusive, the entire parcel. There were some gaps in there, which is where the survey that Woodset would propose on would encompass the entire property. And then, then that divide could be verified.
If you guys need more shots than what it was, I mean, I personally seen it. There was hundreds of shots and most of them are specific to, you're right, it doesn't encompass the entire property. It also doesn't encompass a neighbor property, but the top graphical divide is pretty defined within reason, right? So I'm not sure that this property is 16 acres. I, I mean, shots a thousand feet away. I, I don't, what's the relevance of it, right? I mean, I, I'm not sure that that's necessary, but if that's what the council deems necessary, I'm not here to argue about it. I just want to figure out a way, a path forward to make sure that this was done correctly. It, it just, if in the, there's some messages were sent and they talked about the city coming out and seeing it. Just to be clear, the first time that anybody's been on that property that I know of, I mean, they, they could have gone on there without, but we had that meeting, it was the first time a planning commission or a council member has been on that property, the first time.
We went just previously, just like last month.
Right.
That, actually, there was a walk-through many years ago on that property.
But not with me being there, right?
You weren't the owner of the property at the time.
Oh, I see. And yes, that would probably be accurate because I wasn't the owner, but again, I'm happy to provide whatever. If that's what you guys deem necessary.
Yes, we do have someone online that would like to comment whenever that, whenever you're ready, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments right now with Jethro? Otherwise, we can go to the person online.
Yeah.
I do. Stephen, to your recollection, who from the planning commission made a site visit?
I I can't recall any of them saying that they had made a site visit.
But originally from 2019, that was a number of years.
At the original plating, they may have been.
I'm just.
Members of that body.
I don't, well, you were at the planning commission and when I was, it was my second to last meeting as liaison for P and Z and this was brought up then. Could you just give a quick synopsis as to why the planning commission at that time, for everybody's refreshed memory, made the case for the denial?
I can look at the minutes here.
Oh, sorry. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I thought maybe you have it offhand, but there's a lot of opinion based on this. And wrongly deploy discretion, I would say. It's different when you lay eyes on something, you can see that something's not been altered. Especially when you look at that property and you look at where gravity is going to flow. It's pretty reasonable to use common sense and to be able to look at something and if you set a ball on a counter and it's going to flow one way or the other, it's pretty apparent that gravity is pulling it in one direction or the other. And on this piece of property, until having eyes on that land and seeing where the topo is drawn at, it's only discretion and it, and it's, it's opinion. And sadly, unless those type of steps are made to be able to get out there and actually have boots-on-the-ground ability to witness what that land looks like unaltered, as I think the majority of us were under the oppression that it was.
Right.
It's a pretty tough, tough one to to not be on the same page about.
Right. I did locate the minutes. If you'd like me to kind of summarize the, the discussion there. A lot of conversation was had around the plotting process back in 2021, how this hadn't not been contested at that time. And if there was a problem with the determination as determined by city staff and corroborated by the DNR and approved, why that wasn't brought forward at the original plating time to be fettered out and discussed prior to that plat approval. In summary, that's how the minutes flow and, and result in the motion.
Yeah, and just to recap from being at the meeting, there's a lot of discussion talked about the grading that had been done and how it had been altered. And when we, for your knowledge, Mark, when we walked out there, there wasn't grading done. It actually hasn't been altered. It's, it's virgin. So, so I don't, you know, where the, where the grading was discussed or whatever, that wasn't a relative thing when we walked the site.
Okay, should we turn it over to Paul online? Paul, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Okay, you can go ahead. Yeah.
First of all, I want to say thank you for allowing me to participate remotely during, through Zoom. It's very convenient for me. I don't think anyone would want to sit next to me with this cold tonight. So I appreciate the opportunity. I, I just think we need to step back a little bit and recall what we're talking about here. Mr. Carpenter contends that the prior planning staff in the city made a mistake because of their, what he's implying is that they didn't have the knowledge or otherwise they were incompetent or something, and that's just not true. There is no statutory requirement regarding the how the top graph divide is determined, either in the Nisswa ordinance or the state of Minnesota. There are many, many methods on how to determine the top graph divide in the development. Mr. Carpenter is a professional developer and he was represented by professional surveyors and site planners and developers as well. Everyone is very well aware of the issue and the ramifications of the determination of topical of divide. The divide was determined by the city based on the survey information provided by the developer. That's typical and that's appropriate. The determination was made based on the best information that was available at the time, using reasonable methods and procedures and a common methods and procedures, and that was completely appropriate at the time. The city planner even went out to the DNR and confirmed, and the DNR in an email back to the city confirmed that the determination was appropriate and should be used for the development of this parcel. There was nothing wrong and no mistake made. Now, Mr. Carpenter presents additional, more detailed survey information, which allows for a different methodology to be used, an alternative methodology. But that doesn't mean that there was a mistake made or that there was some sort of error made. It just means that there was another alternative method that he could have presented at the time. But he did not. Instead, he chose to rely on the determination that was made, proceed with the finalizing of the plat. That determination included the, included many factors that relied on the, the number of lots that were in the plat. Remember, the divide determination determined the number of, the number of lots in the plat. I can get into some of those, those decisions in the plat discussion, the final, the, the approval of the plat. And I think that's what the planning commission was getting at. There are many issues that were decided during the final, during the determination approval of the plat that were based on the determinations made. And if the top graph divide had been changed or different, the outcome of the plat approval would also have been different. So coming back now at this point, I ask, what is the justification for changing the divide determination when there was no error? You're changing a determination that was properly and reasonably made by the city and approved by the DNR. There's no provision in the statute or in the city ordinance allowing such a change. Your planning commission itself unanimously recommended that the city council deny this request. The planning commission determinations, the planning commission presumably are experts in this matter, have worked for many years talking about this specific development and the specific plat unanimously recommended to the city council that they deny this recommendation. The discussion about whether the land has been altered, changed, whether there are more detailed methods of determination of the top to divide is really absolutely irrelevant to any of this conversation. I mean, imagine the precedent you'd be setting, allowing the developer to come in years later to change fact determinations in order to change the shoreline regulations that apply to the development after the fact that the plat has been, been finalized. Mr. Carpenter could have challenged the divide determination at the time, but he didn't. He accepted it, relied on it, proceeded to build roads, build paths, build homes, sell homes, build, build boardwalks, piers, started to develop the land and now wants to add another lot to the, to the lots on Roy Lake. Obviously, it's valuable to, it would be valuable to. Obviously, it's valuable to, it would be valuable to him to have an extra lot to sell. But it would also have changed if he had done it at the time of the plat, would have changed this perhaps, uh, for example, the, the need to build public roads to his lots. Remember that the shape of this lot that he's even talking about has a strange, uh, the, the shape of it has a strange, uh, arm, tangent arm that stretches way out to the, uh, to the, to Roy Lane to provide a driveway access. During the plating process, it was, there were detailed discussions about whether Mr. Carpenter would be required to install roads according to city standards. He came back for the plat with fewer lots so that he could avoid putting public roads into the lot plot. But you're allowing him now, you would if you changed the, the divide to not, to avoid having to put in public roads and instead rely on a strange, um, uh, common driveway which doesn't meet any code standards. I mean, the lot certainly has right angles and so forth that would not be, the author would not be allowed in the, uh, uh, plotting process. The planning commission reached the right decision. With it unanimously recommended to you that you deny this, uh, request. And I don't see any, uh, any basis, uh, on which to review it or change it. Mr. Carpenter hasn't presented any author, authorization, any support or justification for the change, other than, sure, he would like to add another lot, like to split the, the lot in two, the Roy, the lot on Roy Lake into two. Yeah, we, I've never suggested that the developer can't do whatever he wants with his land, as long as he complies with the ordinances of the city of Nisswa and the, and the statutes of the state of Minnesota. I think we have to be very careful here. This is very sensitive land. It is, um, a complicated land, oddly shaped, it's two lakes, one a natural environment lake with wetlands and swamps and bluffs and steep hills. And that's, uh, uh, and the ordinances, uh, have, uh, uh, prevented the development of an excessive amount of lots. And, um, I just asked that the city council seriously consider the justification for allowing a developer to come back years later and alter the facts that were properly determined at the time of the plating process, uh, in order to basically circumvent the planning process and, uh, squeeze in yet another lot into the development that, uh, initially, uh, wasn't, uh, wasn't authorized. Again, uh, I'd love to ask you any questions that you have, but, oh, I, I, during your conversation, you talked about whether or not the planning commission had visited the site. Uh, I, I do recall that whether it was, uh, uh, Mr. Carpenter or the previous developer and so forth, that absolutely the planning commission had visited the site, uh, if not one or multiple occasions for different, uh, discussions and so forth. The planning commission discussed this lot, this development numerous times and was very, very well aware of the site conditions of the development. So, uh, with that, I would say thank you for your time and, and your attention.
Thank you, Paul. Does anyone have any questions for Paul?
No, I would, I would say, you know, the only comment with that, that's all the more why have W S N come out here. There's no statute of limitations on finding the truth and the accurate information on this property, and that's all that we're trying to do as a council. So what I said at the beginning of the meeting is only confirmed by that. Let's have W S N move forward with a proposal that Mr. Carpenter would agree to pay, so we can put this to bed and rest once and for all because, um, you know, all the emotion hearsay on this has just gone on too long, too many years, and we just need to get to the truth and, and put it to bed, so.
Oh, yeah, to even further Joe's, Joe's point there, um, simply the background of this, even in your memo from November twenty-four to, to the December meeting, sitting this wise, when asked to review a topographic divide determination made by the city and approved by the D N R in twenty nineteen, reviewing it, I have no reason to not be able to see that through, especially on the basis of walking it and seeing that. There's no way that there's water flowing from one, one side of that hill into the lake on the other side of it.
The, there, after being on site, it's a clear, it's, it's clear that there's, there's something off. You know.
So do we need a motion for this?
But it's, it's pretty obvious.
Yes, I would.
So.
Do we, do we wanna make a motion? Um, we need, we would.
To make a motion to have the, have with Seth prepare a proposal to bring to the council in March for consideration.
Yeah, I, I would say, I'll, I'll make a motion that if.
In March? Well, for the proposal, yes.
Yeah, if Mr. Carpenter would continue to want to move forward with this, the proposal would be that he would, um, get the proposal from W S N, once they have presented it to the city council and we've overlooked it, you know, and approved it, to have Stephen present it to you in March, so. Meaning that we're comfortable with the way that they're gonna provide the information and put it together, we'd review that in March, give it to Stephen and he'd propose it to you. So that's, that's the motion I'd make on the next steps moving forward.
Who is the client, though?
Um, Mr. Carpenter would be the client.
I think the city is the client. He's just agreeing to pay the bill.
Agreeing to pay the bill, okay. If that's the way it should be worded then.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter.
Yeah, thank you guys. It was, uh, we put the time in, you know, it's for sure. Yeah, one more day and I.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, next up, our council and liaison reports. Um, I just have two quick things. One, we did our brainstorm with the staff, um, and Terry, the manager of the pickle and city staff. And we'll have more presentation on that at the retreat next Tuesday, so I won't take up any more time tonight on that. Um, and then the second thing is, um, we had talked about finding a vehicle to get more information out to residents, business owners, whatnot, and talked about doing a newsletter. Uh, the most economical way would be to do an email newsletter, um, which I think is something we'd like to do moving forward, but for getting that first one off the ground, the idea would be to do a mailed newsletter so we can get people to sign up for the email newsletter, right? Make people aware of it. Um, and so just wanted to get thoughts, um, and if the council would be okay if we aim to do like a first printed newsletter in April, not to spend more than, call it five thousand, um, which Jenny said we have available in funds, and then we would do an email newsletter from there on forward.
I'm all for it.
I'm all for it. I would just say that, um, we would want it to residents
Yes.
and of business owners.
Yep.
You know, that we, even though that you're not a resident, that whoever's doing business in the city would be informed of it.
Yep, and we, we've gotten a couple of bids on, again, everyone that pays taxes here, right? So people that own the buildings as well.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. That's all I have, um. Council member Frailly, we'll start with you.
Uh, Parks and Rec had a very good meeting this, this month, um. Main topic was the, the ice rink, um, and we will be bringing forth information in a open meeting before the March council meeting. Um, Parks and Rec needs direction and action from the council, so.
Parks and Rec needs money.
Yeah.
How do we get them money?
That's been discussed too. There's, we will see, hopefully we can find different foundations and different people.
I mean, to hijack your.
No, no.
But like we discussed, uh, with Minnesota Hockey Day coming to Brainerd, ultimately B I R in twenty twenty-seven, had an opportunity to speak with the, uh, committee chair that helped, uh, really drive that committee to get Hockey Day Minnesota to commit, which is ultimately the Minnesota Wild.
Yep.
Which then ultimately he relayed to me about our project that we would like to try to see done, hockey related specifically, not the rest of the park, um, the Minnesota Wild Foundation. I believe that's the name of it. He stated that, uh, that would be a phenomenal conduit for us to be able to try to get support from them. It's a great way to be able to increase exposure, Minnesota Hockey Day alone, but even leading up to that, um, could be a facility that hosts a high school hockey game that's a part of Minnesota Hockey Day as well. Um, could be a good opportunity. So I'm gonna be getting more information when he returns from his vacation and, uh, happy to relay that to Amber and Jenny and yourself.
Good.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I have.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Council member Zan, do you have anything? Paul?
Nothing.
Okay, um, last thing is we just have noted the upcoming meetings and commissions, and with that, we are, we'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So, yeah.
All right, a motion to adjourn is not debatable.